Good evening and welcome to the October 12 regular meeting of the City of Arcata's Planning Commission. We hold these meetings as a webinar in response to local efforts to reduce the spread of the COVID-19 virus. If you wish to make a public comment during the meeting, there are two ways. If you're on your computer, you can click the raised hand icon. When the commission is discussing the agenda item on which you would like to speak. When the public comment period opens and it's your turn, you'll get a notice when the clerk unmutes you and you'll have two minutes to comment. If you're on your phone, you can also join the meeting and comment by calling the number in meeting ID, all of which is at the bottom of the screen. Press star nine to let the clerk know you wish to speak. When the public comment period opens and it's your turn, the clerk will unmute you and you'll hear a prompt. And you'll have two minutes to comment. So this meeting is now officially called the order. Director Loyah, can we get a roll call, please?
Yes, Chair of the State Alcock.
Here.
Vice Chair Mayor.
Here.
Commissioner Tegney.
Here.
Commissioner Figaro.
Here.
And I believe we will be joined shortly by Commissioner Barstow and perhaps Davies.
You missed White.
I'm sorry, too many things going on at once. Thank you for that, Dan. And Commissioner White. And Commissioner Barstow.
I see him, but I can't hear.
I'm here.
Okay, perfect.
And then at the staff's table, we have David Loyah, Director of Community Development. Joe Matier, Senior Planner, Elo Freyde, Senior Planner, and I think I saw that we had Emily Incorn, Director of Environmental Services. Is there anybody else that I missed? Is that correct? Okay. All right, let's move to oral communications. This time is provided for people to address the commission. Or submit written communications on matters not on this evening's agenda. At the conclusion of all oral and written communications, the commission may respond to statements. Any questions that require commission actions will be set by the commission for future agenda or referred to staff. Is there any member of the public that has any comments that are not on the agenda?
I have one, one hand raised. Call and use her to go ahead.
Hi, did you all have a question for me? This is Mark Lynn.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. You had your hand raised. So this is the period of time when you can speak on matters not on the agenda. Did you have something that you'd like to speak to that's not on the agenda?
No, no, I just wanted to speak during the public comment session of the issue.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so on to the consent calendar. The only item we have is the minutes from August 24th. Does anybody need to pull that item or can we get a motion to approve it as is? Can someone make a motion?
Yes, I move to approve.
Number first by Commissioner Tegney and a second.
Make a second.
Okay, we have a second by Commissioner Figaro. So can we get a roll call?
Yeah, Commissioner Barstow.
Hi.
Commissioner Tegney.
Hi.
Commissioner White.
Hi.
Commissioner Figaro.
Hi.
Vice Chair Mayor.
abstained. I wasn't there.
Okay, and Chair.
I. Okay, motion approved. Okay, so we have several public hearing items to consider this evening. We're going to start with the design review and sign permits for Mazati's. That before we open this public hearing, do we have any commissioners that have an ex parte communication to disclose, anything to disclose? Okay, no, okay, can we get a staff report, please? Oh. No, okay.
Sure, if we could pull up the PowerPoint presentation. Thank you. Well, my name is Joe Matier, Senior Planner with the City of Arcata Community Development Department. Before you this evening is a design review and sign permit for Mazati's Arcata. Project facade improvements in downtown Arcata. Next slide, please. Staff recommends that the planning commission approve the action that you'll find as attachment A, approving the facade improvements. Including the findings of approval and environmental review. Also the conditions of approval, which we'll also find on attachment A. And then the project is, the approval is based on the attachment B, the project design and description. Next slide, please. This here slide is a vicinity map that shows the Arcata Plaza, the square in the green there. And the blue outline is the Mazati's restaurant area. And then the purple outline is the Arcata Historic, Arcata Plaza Historic District. And so I just want to give a little context to that. The project before you this evening is required for the design review. When projects are located in the Arcata Historic Plaza District. And this particular project is only facade improvements on a portion of the entire commercial property. So we're only looking at the area outlined in blue. Project doesn't include any building increase in size or anything there. But yeah, next slide, please. Here we have the kind of the existing rendition on the top and then the proposed improvements on the lower on the bottom there. And I do have, I just have this for context and we can go back to this slide if any of the commissioners wish to address any of the existing conditions there. Next slide, please. So here's the kind of the, what's being proposed for this project, the new outdoor lights on the top overlooking the Mazati sign logo there. There's two new signs consisting of Mazati's and then the, the good restaurant there or good food. There's new windows being proposed. Some of the windows are going to be just repaired and repainted and kind of maintained while others are complete new windows. Some of the windows are getting smaller and then some of them are having different operations where they might be fixed and now they might be operable with awnings. And some of the lower ones that you'll see are kind of diffused glass on the lower panes of that. And then there, there's some new tile being proposed and some of it would be just repaired with the like stucco on that. And there's other, staff recommends that one of the architectural features that seems to be kind of in disrepair in the upper left corner. It's not, you know, a big obvious disrepair, but we thought this would be an opportunity for them to clean that up. So we do have a condition of approval on that. Staff recommends approval on this project. It really is. A nice design. It's well balanced for that building and the sign there. It is prepared by an architect. And we find that the, the project is harmonious with the Arcata Plaza Historic District. The signs are part of a planned sign program or a primary sign program that allows an increase in sign area. And in this case, they're utilizing that to increase the sign area a little bit on that. Next slide, please. The findings of approval you'll find in attachment A, exhibit one of the staff report. The project is compliance, in compliance with the design review findings and the findings for sign permits. And it also qualifies for categorical exemption according to the California Environmental Quality Act as an existing facility. Very minor improvements to this facade, but anyway, nonetheless, the Arcata Plaza is important for our community. And this is one of those checks and balances that are in place for us to make sure that we have good design and we really care for that plaza that's important for our community. Next slide, please. This is just a copy of the conditions of approval that staff added. Repair that Chevron and then remove any of the unused infrastructure that might be kind of complicating the front of the facade. We thought that might be an opportunity to clean up anything that might be left over from other projects there. Next slide, please. Again, staff recommends that the planning commission adopt the action as you'll find in attachment A. Including the findings and conditions of approval, including the environmental exemption. And they are based on the project description as a whole. I certainly can answer any questions the planning commission may have. I do know that the business owner is present. And also their agent and they'd be happy to answer any questions that the planning commission may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Does any commissioners have follow up questions for? For Joe, before we open it? So no questions, okay. So we'll open this for a public comment. And as is customary, the applicant or the representative is invited to be the first person to comment. Mr. Mazati, is he here? Or his representative?
He is. Let's see, we've got a couple of folks raising their hands. There we go, okay. Mr. Mazati, if you're able to speak now.
Hey, thank you, everybody, for joining us tonight. On behalf of Mazati's and my team of experts, we all thank you for your time. We know you guys work hard to keep our community all on the same page. You know, we want to contribute to that and find solutions to, you know, concerns that you guys have. Find solutions to, you know, the problems that the front of that building has had for many years, you know, it just does needs, it needs a freshening up. And, you know, considering all the big changes ahead, you know, coming for our community as a whole. You know, we felt, you know, now was the time to go ahead and, you know, kind of rebrand, refresh and update Mazati's, you know, not only on the exterior, but do some interior. Work that's needed to be done as well. And again, you know, I have Cash Bouja and, you know, Valerie Allen over at the architect and engineer. That taken this over and I pretty much put it in their hands and said, look, you guys know best what, you know, what we need to do here. And what they came up with, I, I'm completely impressed. I'm, I'm excited to see it come to fruition and, you know, whatever. Whatever, you know, concerns you guys have, we're, we're ready to make the changes or keep them as they are, you know, whatever you guys decide. But our intention is again to better our community and, you know, bring, bring a new face to Mazati's. While staying within the historical integrity and the historical, you know, needs of our community because at the end of the day, that's the most important thing. We do have a, a great community. Our buildings are, are really, really special in all of our minds. And so, yeah. But again, thank you all for that. And I really don't have much to say other than that, other than I'm, I'm excited to get reopened. I know if you guys, if any of you say you miss a certain Mazati's item or food product that we produce, I probably miss it just as much as you guys. So. I'm working as hard as I can to get the place open ASAP because, because I'm hungry too. So. Other than that, that's about it, guys. Thank you for, for granting me this time to speak.
And then Valerie is here as well.
Yes. Um, I just want to say that Joe Matier and Joe Mazati just did a really good job of explaining everything. So I don't have a lot to add, but. We did, you know, think a lot about the whole building that extends over to Lipations and Shipwreck. And wanted to keep. That same continuity and rhythm going over onto the Mazati side. And just try to freshen up the building and. Give it a new. Yeah, just freshen it up and, and keep a lot of the historicity that we all appreciate. And we worked with Alex Stillman also looking at some of the older photos and just making sure that we were kind of keeping. With the historic aspects of the building as much as we could. So. That's all I have to say unless anyone has any further questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you. Are there any members of the public that would like to comment on this item?
Hi, I'm Alex Stillman and I really think the idea that Joe has to try to get more of a street front and interior together, we definitely did that. When you think about what happened over at, where Slice of Hubbub Pie and the local side of work, you have a combination where. They had a sliding door that opened and it made you feel like the inside was the outside. And he's doing the same thing with the windows that would be on the west side of the building that you would have a possibility to open them. You'd get ventilation through them. And also you'd be able to see people going by and talk to them. So I think that's a really nice aspect. Also, I'm looking forward to the woodwork on the outside of the building being restored and brought back to life. I think you'll find that will be really a dynamite. Improvement on the building because it's gotten quite weathered. And at this time, Renaissance painting is going to be doing that work and they're looking forward to starting soon. So it's going to be really a nice addition. And as far as Arcata Main Street, we approve that. And we have a design committee and that's one of the things that we are really happy about. This new energy going into Mazati's. Thank you.
Is there any other member of the public? Oh, looks like we have one. Gordon.
Yes, I'd just like to say that my wife and, and I have been. Customers and fans of Mazati for many years and we were dismayed when we heard rumors that it might close down as a result of COVID. I am really thrilled beyond belief to hear that not only is it reopening, but it will reopen better than ever. And actually make the plaza even more beautiful. And so standing ovation from over here.
Thank you, thank you, Gordon. Let's see, we have a couple more. Jeanette, you're in the meeting.
I didn't see that unmuted thing. So I just want, can I speak now?
Yes, please do.
Oh, I just want to say I'm very excited about this solution. I think graphically, it's, it's beautifully balanced. You know, the, the larger things and the details and stuff. And there's something about it that's extremely compelling. When I looked at it, I thought, you know. It speaks so much about what is inside, what they're actually serving. There's, it's, it's terrific. I won't say anymore.
Okay, thank you. Um, and Chair, I will. Let's see, I'll let you know, there are a couple of people who've already spoken that have raised their hands again. I don't know if you want to go through another round of, of public comment on this, but. Thought I'd let you know since you can't see them in the audience.
Sure, we can give him a minute each.
Okay. Okay, Alex, go ahead again.
Oh, I think that's hand is up from the past. I think I forgot to lower it. Excuse me.
Okay. I love Zoom. Again, Gordon, is your hand also up from, from the last? Thought I lowered everyone's hand, but.
Looks like Joe Mazati wants to.
Hearing that, I'm gonna, yeah, I'm gonna assume so.
Uh, yeah, yeah, thank you. Sorry, I just wanted to interject that. Thank you Valerie and Alex and Jeanette. And I think you said Gordon. I appreciate you guys' comments on that. And, uh, you know, our intention is to make sure, even though that our focus point is on our space. You know, I felt compelled in this opportunity to make sure that we, we get the whole job done. So the intention is really to go ahead and continue the painting and everything that is described, I believe Valerie would agree with and Alex as well. We didn't think we needed to do too many changes, I mean, on that particular portion, but we did want to clean up the, the kind of the transition from one side to the other. So that you could get somewhat of a storefront for Mazati's without, you know, changing too much of the rest of the building because there just wasn't, wasn't any. You know, spot that you could find along the building. You could say, okay, let's just make this look like our building. I said, look, let's just get the whole front and let's do it right. You know, so it's a, it's a, it's a chance, opportunity, you know, for us to do it correctly. And we're, we're really excited about it. And I think all of us are going to be happy when we walk in. To the plaza and we see that sticking out fresh and new for our community. So, uh, thank you again. That's all.
Right, thank you, Joe.
Any other members of the public that'd like to comment on this item? Okay.
That's all, Chair.
The public comment period is now closed and it's time for commissioner deliberation. Please raise your hand if any of the commissioners have any comments or follow up questions or a motion. Judith?
Uh, you're still muted, Commissioner Mayor. Do you have a second mute on your headset?
Is this better?
There you go. We can hear you now. Yep.
Okay, good. I have, I have double. Machine things all over the place. It does help to see the graphics in color, which, you know, we didn't have in the paper. The paper sets and it, it looks like it, it will be a good thing. I, I was kind of interested in this case because Mazati's actually shares the building with other businesses and this proposal. Does have implications for the other businesses. In that building as well. And so you get into the, the larger. What had been called the master sign permit issue. And, and that is. I, I believe something that applies to the whole parcel rather than just one part of it, one business. And, and so I appreciate the way this proposal actually dealt with. That, that larger issue that's going to arise as businesses come and go in the building. That said. In changing the term that the document uses for that permit from primary permit from, to primary permit from. A master sign permit. I, I do understand that the word master is a trigger, but in our land use code and our design review, it does have. A kind of legal standing. And so I would appreciate that if terminology is going to be changed. In a review process like this, that it actually be changed in the code. To avoid confusion as people look through the public record and wondering, and wonder, whoa, whoa, where did that term come from? If, if you miss that one line in. The packet, you've, you've missed that redefinition. And so if there are terms like that that are going to be used differently, I'd appreciate. If, if. The city or staff would initiate those official changes so that people looking at the record know what they're looking at. Thanks very much. It, it, it looks like it's going to look good to me. I'll, I'll miss, I'll miss seeing people's legs sitting in Mazati's from the street. You know, that's one of the inside outside things I always appreciated is you could actually see who was sitting in there and we'll lose that, but I guess the people sitting in there will gain some privacy. So, there you go.
I'm sorry, Vice Chair, can you point to where this nomenclature confusion is? I don't think I caught that in my review.
Oh, Joe Matier, are you, are you there? Yes, it's, it's in the staff report. And. There's, yeah, some triggers and, you know, internal decisions. And we, and I certainly appreciate Commissioner Mayor's bringing it up and that I do like to see code changes that reflect that, but we have a fiscal responsibility and we are updating our code. And that's going to be a bigger. Thing when we review our general plan and our land use code as a whole and try to clean up that. So we do have some equity throughout the document itself. So. It wasn't to, it was just trying to be sensitive to our community members. Right, I, I, I do understand that. I'm, I'm also concerned that people be able to look at the public record and if they miss that one line in your staff report. Have some idea of what they're actually looking at because. These are review standards that have some, some legal basis in terms of what's allowed and what's not allowed. So. Yeah, thank, thank, thank you for being sensitive to that. And I think that the sensitivity has to. Be reflected in our ordinances rather than just in the staff report. And until they are, I think we need to be very, very clear. In terms of the language that we're using.
And so. Yeah, no, I, I totally agree, Vice Chair Mayor. And, and I'm just wondering, is that replicated in anywhere in the action or, or findings or conditions, Joe? You're muted.
Yes, I carried that theme throughout the document.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm, I'm going to ask if the planning commission, do modify the findings, conditions and action to reflect the language that's codified. At this point, I understand the thrust and I apologize. I didn't catch this in my initial review of this document. And so where in your action, if you could say where, you know, where primary sign permit or whatever the, the language was, was used. Refer to the code section and refer to the, the nomenclature, the accurate nomenclature out of the code section. I'd appreciate that.
If, if staff could enter. The project was approved under a planned sign program previously. So that would be one way of handling it as well. Where we don't even have to mention the other program because we're not really doing a new. Sign permit. We're just finding that this is in compliance with the existing planned sign program. So either way, I'm fine with it.
I think that would work. Either acknowledging the existing planned sign program or referring to the master sign program that's allowed for in the land use code.
Sir Tegney? You're muted.
Yeah, there we go. Um, yeah, so are you suggesting that in, if we're going to make a motion to approve this, that we just need to make reference about this? Primary versus master plans?
Yeah, where, where in the document, it refers to the primary sign program that staff replace that with compatible or consistent with the approved. Plan sign program permit.
Okay, if the commission's ready, I'd sure like to make a motion to approve this. It looks like an absolutely wonderful project. That's historically in character and. The craftsmanship's wonderful. I love the signage. And in my motion, I will mention that. Wherever in this document, the word primary has supplanted master plan. Master sign plan, that should be consistent throughout the document.
We have a motion by Commissioner Tegney. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Barstow. Can we have a roll call?
Commissioner Barstow.
Hi.
Commissioner Tegney.
Hi.
Commissioner Figaro.
Hi.
Commissioner White.
Can you hear me?
Is that a yes? Yes. Okay, and Vice Chair Mayor.
Hi.
And Chair of the State Alcock.
I. Okay, motion approved. Okay, motion approved. All right, so we're going on to our next public hearing, which is to consider adopting Resolution PC 21-02. We're being asked if the acquisition of a portion of parcel number 507131091 is in compliance with the general plan. Again, before we open this public hearing, do we have any ex parte communications to disclose? Okay, all right. Can we get a staff report, please?
Good evening, Chair and Vice Chair and Commissioners. My name is Emily Sinkorn and I'm the Environmental Services Director. And our department is bringing this item forward to you this evening as we have an opportunity to greatly enhance river access and community access to the Mad River at our existing Carlson Park in the Valley West neighborhood. This is an area that the City Council, the department brought forward to the City Council for potential acquisition of a public access easement and fee title acquisition back in July 2021. And the council approved entering into negotiations with a neighboring property owner, Eureka Ready Mix in the northeast corner of Carlson Park. And I'm going to briefly share my screen so that you may see this location. And so today, the the department is seeking your input on if this potential acquisition will conform with the city's general plan. But here is Carlson Park and the City Council has as a priority project to develop Carlson Park for community access recreation needs, improved open space and access to the Mad River. And our department has currently two grant applications outstanding for improvements. But the one thing that in a lot of our outreach and also just understanding of Carlson Park is our existing Carlson Park locations does not have great river access opportunities. But we have a willing seller and interested collaborator in Eureka Ready Mix just to the north for improved river access. And so here is a portion of a showing the parcel that is about a little less than an one, or sorry, I think a little less than an acre that is in the northeast corner of Carlson Park. And it has a lot easier river access for non-motorized boat launch. So here's just two photos of existing river access points that are steep and have minimal bank in the existing Carlson Park. And here is the location of the parcel for potential acquisition that is Eureka Ready Mix's parcel. Sorry, I'm going to stop sharing my screen real quick. So I just wanted to give you an outline of where this is located. And so the staff has found that this potential acquisition would be consistent with the Parks and Recreation Master Plan, also with the city's general plan policy and open space number four, open space for outdoor recreation and coastal access. And this is also a council goal for this fiscal year to further develop Carlson Park. We have a real timely interest in moving forward a first of public access easement with this willing seller, Eureka Ready Mix in order to be fully qualified for a grant through the WCB Wildlife Conservation Board. But the Eureka Ready Mix is interested in eventual acquisition of this parcel by the city. And so we anticipate to work with Eureka Ready Mix for both concurrently a public access easement and a purchase and sale agreement. And staff have also kind of reviewed, done an initial environmental review and have deemed that this acquisition would be exempt through the Environmental California Environmental Quality Act under Section 15316, transfer of ownership of land in order to create perks and also Section 15317, open space contracts or easements, and also Section 15325, transfer of ownership of interest in land to preserve existing natural conditions. And so our staff's recommendation is to consider and adopt Resolution PC 2106, finding that this acquisition would conform to the Arcata general plan. And I'm happy to take any questions.
Do any of the commissioners have any questions for? Emily? Commissioner Tegney?
Hi, Emily. Thank you for that. I've walked this area and it's very confusing down there. I'm sure you recognize that. And it's very hard to tell when you've left what is City of Arcata Park and gone into kind of weird commercial spaces and a scattering of illegal camping and various other things that are going on. So particularly in that direction as you get behind Eureka Ready Mix. So this feels like a very important purchase. And your map shows trails going into there and you know, thus the confusion as we leave the park and go into private property. It sure feels like an appropriate purchase. I'm very excited to have better river access. There's a long ways between the pump station parks and the boat ramp. And Valley West has never had access. So this is just really important that we get whatever the easiest way to carry any kind of a craft down and get into the Mad River and enjoy it right along that stretch is a big deal. So thanks for your work and it's an exciting purchase.
Commissioner Figueroa?
I just have a quick, just real quick question in regards of just the acquisition piece. Is there any conflict in respects to any of the SMAR activities that are going on in regards of gravel bar out there? I've I don't remember if it's GR Sunberg's gravel bar there or the RMs, but just just checking in respects to that, if there's actually going to be active gravel mining, sand mining operations out on that plant bar. And yeah, that's a just a quick question I have for you guys.
No, thank you very much for that question. So Eureka Ready Mix does actively take gravel through an existing permit, but that is a bit upstream of this location. And the public access easement and then the eventual fee acquisition of this portion of a parcel, we would not be having gravel mining on on that easement area or future acquisition. But the Eureka Ready Mix has been a very patient and willing partner in this work. And they are interested in the city working together with them to notify the public when on their existing parcels further upstream, when they are doing gravel work to discourage public access travel up that way. And currently people do go down to the river bar and there is, you know, there's not existing signage. And so often you can wander up the river, down the river, but the city would work with them to really ensure that when there is active gravel operations that we are notifying and really denoting where the city property is and where river access is.
Excellent. Thank you.
Commissioner Mayor?
Hi, thank you very much. It it seems like a great idea and it will definitely help with access and and bringing the use of Carlson Park in into people's people's sense of what Arcata has to offer for for recreational access. My question has to do with timing and jurisdiction. This the city would acquire an easement first with the understanding that later presumably when money is available, the city would actually buy the property in fee. That that's what would happen, hopefully. Is that true?
Yeah, and the the rationale for that is we need to acquire site control for this portion of the parcel for our WCB grant that was submitted several months ago with the clear, you know, indication of our steps to get to site control and we need to acquire that at least by February. And we're aiming for the end of the year in order to be considered to receive the grant award. And then, but but the city already has budgeted for potential acquisition. But the timing of an acquisition will take longer as we need to agree upon an appraiser and go through that process in order to be paying fair market value for the acquisition. So recognizing that may take longer months, we wanted to move forward the public access easement to ensure site control first.
Okay, that makes a lot of sense. The 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 second part of the question has to do with jurisdiction. The the site is outside Arcata's Incorporated area. It's out, it's in the unincorporated county. And the language of the government code that was included in our packet indicated that Humboldt County would also have to approve this. It was a little confusing. It's obvious that the City of Arcata would act first and then go to Humboldt County presumably by February when the site control has to be established for the grant. Is there any thinking about annexing the site to the City of Arcata? And if so, is there a reason why that has not been indicated as part of this proposal? And I I I think you can imagine what I'm about to get at because then you get into sort of a Alaska and a Seq, Alaska and a Sequo question, which the limited nature of this proposal obviously doesn't trigger, but the, you know, the longer term thing would.
Can can I jump in on that, Emily? And I know you have some information on this as well. But the city has, you know, several times in the past acquired properties that are outside of the city limit. And sometimes those have gone through, you know, the the LaFco reorganization process to bring them into the city. Sometimes they haven't. Sometimes it's taken a very long time for those actions to happen. Inis Park is a perfect example of that. I think that it's it's always desirable to have lands that we that we own within the incorporated city limits. It allows for the, you know, the APD, for example, to enforce on those properties with with a little bit more legitimacy than they they do otherwise in their role as as assisting the sheriffs, for example. But I think at this point, we haven't contemplated that far into the project. Really, at this point, the the objective is to you know, to acquire the the easements and, you know, follow up with the the fee title. You know, similar to what we've done with, you know, McDaniel, McDaniel Slough, for example, or, you know, some of the other areas outside. Sunnybury Forest is a perfect example, or the Jacoby Creek Forest is a perfect example, where it took several years before we we actually incorporated that.
So would once this easement is is established and and possibly before the purchase, if if there are enforcement types of issues involved, would would the sheriff still be the ones to do it or would City of Arcata have the right to do that?
We still provide mutual aid to outside agencies. And and it really depends on the nature of the call. I don't feel, you know, completely prepared to address all of the nuances associated with it, but oftentimes, you know, the the APD are involved in, you know, if there's if there's something that needs immediate attention, they'll be the first on the scene. So you don't have to wait for the sheriff to arrive to then, you know, initiate enforcement. So so there is a possibility that we would still be involved in in enforcement on our properties regardless of whether or not they're incorporated.
Okay, thank thank you both for an explanation.
Were there any other questions for Director Sinkorn? Or should we open this to the public? All right, we're going to open this to the public. Is there any member of the public who'd like to comment on this item?
Yeah. Go ahead, Alice.
So this isn't Alice. This is actually her husband Jonathan. And you guys have opened a couple of doors that I'm curious about. You mentioned enforcement as well as transient camps. And having been out there numerous times for a varietal of reasons, there are an abundance of transient camps which are unenforced, unregulated and just left willy nilly, if you will, which plays into environmental impact because there's an abundance of trash and debris that are left by those folks. So who's going to be responsible if the city takes this over? And who's going to enforce it because you've taken in a piece of property according to the map that is on the north side of the river, which is well outside of Arcata city limits and you're now going to be asking the SO to enforce more of your area outside of the city limits when you don't even enforce what you've got currently. And how are you going to augment that enforcement without having additional funding for APD and understaffed police department as it?
Are there any other members?
Do you want me to try and address that, Commissioner? I'm sorry, Chair, what was that?
It's up to you. You feel comfortable? Or not?
Emily and I could probably tag team on this a little bit. Environmental Services and the APD have a long history of you know, working on enforcement, you know, in particular in in the green spaces in and around Arcata.
And effectively.
Obviously, you know, homelessness. Okay, I'm sorry, caller. I'm going to ask you to your comment period has has lapsed. So I'll I'll try and address that that question. The you know, the the ES and APD have a long history of, you know, addressing homelessness in, you know, these green spaces. Obviously, it's an intractable problem. And it has only exacerbated over the last two years with COVID as more and more people have found themselves homeless and, you know, clearly you know, is at or near or beyond, you know, crisis proportions. The the scope of you know, mitigating the problem, finding housing for people and, you know, addressing illegal camping in areas that are currently you know, private property and or, you know, public properties where, you know, where it's it's inappropriate to have, you know, camping is clearly a, you know, priority for the city, a priority for the city council. But it's also outside the scope of the the findings for consistency with the general plan for this acquisition. And so, you know, it's not a very satisfactory answer. I I understand. We're not, you know, addressing homelessness through the acquisition of this property and we're not impacting homelessness one way or the other with the acquisition of this property. But it is it is clearly a problem that we will continue to work on.
Thank you, Director Loia. I would just add that the city is really looking at grant sources and other partnerships to further develop this site as well as partnerships with community organizations such as KUNA for monthly community events and cleanups in particular at the front part of Carlson Park on Mad River Parkway. And believe these are some of the steps to really encouraging the type of use that may be more compatible with the sensitive environmental habitats in this area. And as well as, you know, APD and ES have actively worked, you know, together. And as well as, you know, APD and ES have actively worked, you know, together. On a number of really making contact and growing relationships through respect of people that may be experiencing homelessness. And really trying to address more of the solid waste and other impacts to our waterways and sensitive areas. While as, as Director Loia was saying, really trying to work on overall solutions for additional housing and, and opportunities.
Thank you. Were there any other members of the public?
I don't see any.
Okay, then we'll close the public portion of this. And do the commissioners have any comments or?
Commissioner White?
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to piggyback on that, that in addition to what Kuna is doing, Community United North Arcata. We do go down once a month, but there's many of us that are volunteering additionally a second time a month. And we do go into deeper into behind Carlson Park and in within the, there's, I think, you know, several encampments right now. And also we're working with some partnerships with businesses so that they also will help adopt that part. So it's on the forefront. I live in Valley West and we are definitely taking, you know, that into consideration and making sure that. It's, you know, the environmental impact that these encampments do create are taken care of.
Thank you. So if we don't have any follow-up questions, are we ready for a motion? Or you have more questions for staff? Does anyone want, want to make a motion to approve?
I'll make a, a motion.
I'm, I'm sorry, I can't. Start, start all over again, please.
You bet. I'd like to make an, a motion to adopt, which my screen just left. A resolution number PC 2106, being that it is consistent with the adopted city Arcata general plan. Is there anything else I would want to add to that?
No. So we have a motion by Commissioner White. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a second by Commissioner Figueroa. Can we get a roll call, please?
Yeah, Commissioner White. Commissioner Figueroa. Commissioner Barstow. Commissioner Taggy.
Hi.
Vice Chair Mayor.
Hi.
And Chair of the State Elcock.
Hi. Okay, so a motion is approved. Thank you very much. And on to our last and final public hearing. This is a public hearing regarding the draft EIR for the older Kater Road Bike Way and Pedestrian Improvement Project. Again, do any commissioners have any ex parte communications they wish to disclose?
I, this is Commissioner Figueroa. I need to recuse myself from this portion of the agenda. I work for the California Department of Transportation. I specifically assisted in editing, working on the preliminary environmental study, the PES document. And also the initial site assessment. Because I am the hazardous waste coordinator for District One and assist in local assistance projects. Just wanted to mention too that I have no direct financial interests or gain. And also due to the perception of bias, I am choosing to recuse myself from this. Thank you.
Thank you. So how does he recuse himself on Zoom, David? He can't leave the room. Does he just listen and not participate? Stay on mute or?
Yeah, he has a couple of options. He can simply turn his volume and his, his video off. Or at this point, you know, there are no more items on the agenda if he wants to, you know, follow up on the rest of the meeting on, on YouTube. He can also just drop off the meeting.
I'll choose to drop off the meeting. I'll see you guys later.
Okay, bye.
We still have a quorum, so we don't need. Need him to come back for other issues.
Okay, so let's see. Can we get a staff report then, please?
All right, thank you Chair. So tonight, before you is a public hearing on the draft environmental impact report for the older Kater Road project. We have a presentation that I'd like to, to walk you through that was put together in partnership with the engineering department. And fortunately, I'll say, Major Cottrey, the city engineer, is visiting his family in, in Nepal right now. So he's not available to present the, the material. So he sends his regards. This hearing is primarily a opportu, an opportunity for the public to provide public comment into the record. Oral public comment and written public comment. For the planning commission to hear and primarily for the city council to be able to review that, that body of public comment. The circulation period on the draft EIR lapsed on the 27th of September. So it ended at that point and this public hearing was scheduled at a time certain after that circulation period. To provide this additional opportunity for the public to weigh in. There's no requirement that the planning commission make a recommendation. Because of the nature of the approvals for this project, the planning commission doesn't have a formal role in the discretionary process. There's no planning commission resolution that's required to be forwarded on to the city council for their, their written review. And ultimately, the city council will be the review authority for this project. That's not to say that the planning commission can't, if it so chooses, make a recommendation. But I just wanted to let you know, there's no requirement. And at this point, formal recommendation on the environmental impact report isn't warranted or necessarily appropriate. Since at this point, we only have the draft environmental impact report. The draft environmental impact report was circulated for a period of 45 days. It generated several comments into the record and part of what the final EIR will do is to address those comments. Pointing to either, you know, where in the environmental document the comments were, were dealt with. Or in, you know, in the final EIR, amending and clarifying statements that were made in the draft EIR. To, to further resolve on, you know, the, the public's. Understanding of, of the project. And so for that reason, it's, it would be inappropriate to recommend the city council, for instance, certify this EIR. You don't have the full, full record in front of you to make that recommendation. But certainly if you want to make recommendations on other project elements, you know, the proposed project, the alternatives. Or, you know, if you feel so compelled based on anything you hear from the public tonight to make a recommendation on that, we can certainly carry those forward. Okay, so having said that preamble, I'll let you know that, you know, this project did. Evolve into an EIR based on a fair argument that was presented around historic resources. We're going to touch on that tonight and we have Mel Melvin from JRP with us tonight to talk about the historic resources component. JRP was a sub to GHD who did the environmental work for the city for its submission. Both to Caltrans and also for its, you know, determination as lead agency on the project. And so he's our expert to be able to, you know, address any questions you may have on historic resources. We also have with us tonight Josh Wolf, who is assisting on the engineering side. Who can address any technical questions that you may have about the project or if anything comes up in public comment that you want further clarified. That, you know, is going to absolutely be outside of my league. Josh is here to assist in that. So.
Sorry, David.
I'm sorry. You're not coming through.
Sorry.
I'm sorry, Dilo, you're not coming through.
Can you hear me now?
We're having some delay issues. We're having some delay issues and I, I will, I guess, just before I get started, a note to, to the public. And, and in particular, Mark Delaney, I think you had some, some reverb issues on your end because you have two. Two open mics, one on your computer and one on your phone potentially. So when, when it is time to speak for the public members, please make sure that you're hearing audio only through one source. Okay, and with that. I will pull up my presentation. It's just a, a night of major technical challenges. Okay. Okay, can you confirm that you can see the entire screen and that you're not seeing the slide advanced side, you're actually seeing the complete? Okay, perfect. Thank you for your patience. So tonight, we're just going to go over a history of the project, how we got to where we are in super brief. Nature's presented this to you before, I believe, and so we're going to touch on that. We'll talk about the roundabout design, which has generated quite a bit of a public comment today. And so we'll touch base on that and give you some references for understanding about that as well as the project alternative. Which is improvements to the T intersection. We'll get into the historic resources and the work that we did to evaluate historic resources. So that you understand that in a little bit more detail, talk about next steps. I have a whole bunch of information, if you want to dig into it about the schedule, the budget, all those other things that are in my back pocket. If you want to talk about those things, we can. But I wanted to focus primarily on the items that seem to have been of highest interest, generate the most public comment. We also have several public members who I know want to speak on the project. And so we'll, we'll certainly try and get through this material efficiently so that they have opportunities to speak. So just in brief, the project history. Again, you know, it's, it's been a, a project that's had, you know, a lot of background associated with it. Many, you know, like many projects, it had, you know, fits and starts. But the, the beginning of the project, planning and design process started in 2016. And it's had, you know, a long history of many public engagements and, you know, charrettes that were done with the public. You know, public meetings to take in concerns and, you know, a lot of analysis over the history of the project, including and up to. In approximately, in February, when the project was to be approved. We had an initial study and a mitigated negative declaration prepared for, which had all the technical documents. And again, as I mentioned before, there was a fair argument raised on historic resources, which led us to the EIR. In the development of the project, some of the key concepts that came back early on was to maintain the rural character. Same time improving safety and folks really liked the existing segregated path and so wanted to see more of that. In addition, there were a whole host of desired improvements that folks wanted to see. They ranged from, you know, design concepts like double O lines to, you know, bigger picture, more amorphous concepts like. Hey, let's improve the Jacoby Creek Road intersection. Lots of focus on, on bikes and, and Peds. So that, those were some of the primary concerns that were raised. You know, and, and the public comment really ranged, you know, everything from folks who wanted to see it left as is. They, they really, you know, appreciate the, the rural character of the road and what they, they. Identify with as, as the rural character. But there was, you know, a whole host of, of ideas and concepts that came out of this early work. Ultimately, from that early design, you know, work. The city identified, you know, project limits and some project features to be included. Essentially, a long Bayside Road from Bayside Corners to the existing improvements that were done on Bayside Road. That end, you know, just around Bayside Park, the farm out there. The alternatives that we considered both in terms of, you know, project design. And those ultimately got ported into the draft EIR. Alternatives that were considered included, you know, larger roundabouts, smaller roundabouts. T intersection with stops, T intersection with signals. An unmodified T intersection with speed enforcement or speed feedback. So a whole range of different alternatives and these were considered in the draft EIR. But ultimately rejected as not meeting the, the project objectives or unwarranted for, you know, for engineering standards. Josh can fill you in on those as, as he, if there are any questions. But ultimately in the EIR, we analyzed as, you know, required by, by Sequoia, the no project alternative. So what if we did nothing? We analyzed the proposed project with the roundabout at the intersection of Kater, Old Arcata Road and Jacoby Creek. And then just doing improvements to the T intersection to add some traffic calming features, which was one of the primary. Objectives of the project. I'm going to go into a little bit of detail next about the, the T intersection and the roundabout. And then we'll shift gears to the historic resources. The T intersection, here's the existing conditions. And so the T intersection would really replicate a lot of these existing conditions. A couple of things I wanted to point out about this rendering of the existing conditions. Is that there's a huge area on, you know, some of these properties that are actually in the public right of way. Being used currently as, you know, for all intents and purposes, private property, but they are in the public right of way. But that's not to say that just because they're in the public right of way, they need to be incorporated into the project. Some of the feedback we got through the scoping in this draft EIR. Was that, hey, you know, can we, can we accomplish the same goals just by adding design features? I recognize this is very busy. It's impossible to understand as a graphic on this presentation. But it's also included in the EIR, which we gave reference to in the, in the staff report. But what you see here, you know, just from the 60,000 foot view are a lot of features. And, you know, if, if you want to dig into details about these features again, you know, Josh can, can help explain some of these. But, but they're, they're common design features that you'll see in many streets in Arcata, having, you know. You know, raised islands placed in areas that will, you know, give the appearance of a narrower road. Give some more safety factor with curbs. Right now, there are no curbs or gutters. Or any separation between these adjacent uses, the road and the, and the non-road uses. And so there's a lot of improvements that are proposed here, you know, that would basically take the existing conditions and attempt to make them safer. This project is, this proposal rather is part of the EIR. And if the council so chooses with the environmental work that we're, we're doing now, if they certify that environmental document, could approve this project. If, if they choose to. There is certainly some support in the community for this design. The proposed project is a. Is, is a roundabout. I'm going to explain a little bit of this, what's going on in this graphic here and then I'm going to ask Josh to jump in and, and just describe some of the features of the roundabout. So that we're sure not to miss any. First, this roundabout graphic is overlaid on the existing aerial image. And so if you, if you look real closely and I've got a zoom in on this, on the next slide. But if you look, or in a couple of slides, if you look real closely, you can see the existing conditions. And then this red line outlines where the existing roadway is. And so you can kind of see based on where that red line is and where the, the new infrastructure is, approximately how much new roadway. Would be added to, you know, the existing right of way. In addition, we have some setbacks here from existing uses because that was a concern. Josh, do you, do you mind jumping on describing some of the, the project features?
Sure, absolutely. Good evening, everyone. Yeah, I'd say this is a, a roundabout similar to other roundabouts that you've certainly seen in Arcata. What we have is a, you know, a three-way intersection, so with the center island. Overall, it's 113 feet across, so that's called the inscribed circle. It does have a mountable truck apron, which is in the center there. So that's to accommodate the larger vehicles as they're navigating the roundabout. There are sidewalks and crosswalks provided, so starting on the old Arcata roadside to the left. This is essentially continuation of the trail, or excuse me, the sidewalks. And then you have a crosswalk across the roundabout. At, at those crosswalks, so there's two there, that's the second round, second crosswalk you're showing, there are streetlights included to enhance the visibility. streetlights included to enhance the visibility in the crossing as well as push-button activated flashing lights. So they're called rapid rectangular flashing beacons to further enhance the crosswalk visibility and safety. There's all the sidewalks can also be used for not just pedestrians, but also cyclists, so cyclists who prefer not to navigate the roundabout can actually exit the road and utilize the walkways that are around the perimeter there to navigate the roundabout and get through it. I think those are the major features. I think I should just real quick, the other features we point out are the the center splitter islands, so that'd be a hard scaped area. Yep, right there. So these are areas that just add a little bit of deflection to the road. They also offer those yellow spaces in the middle of the crosswalk. Those are pedestrian refuges, so that allows pedestrians as they're crossing the road to cross one lane at a time and has a spot for them to to wait in the middle, so they don't have to cross both lanes at the exact same moment.
Okay, I did want to just pause real quick here in case the planning commission had any questions about this design or the T intersection, so we can make the best use of Josh's time. And I can't see you all right now, so just jump, jump in with your your comments. Questions. Okay, it's like we're ready to go. Go on, okay. So I wanted to zoom in. A lot of folks have expressed some concern over, you know, the proximity of the new roadway to, you know, to the existing buildings. And so I wanted to share a little bit about, you know, about that feature of the design. You can see in the air photo that this overlays that folks are parking here right now. And so that was another element that, you know, that people were concerned about, you know, the loss of parking. I don't have, you know, the data to go into that tonight. The the loss of parking is certainly a project related issue. It's not a, you know, an environmental impact per se. But I will say that the city engineering department is has taken those concerns into consideration and has identified, you know, approximate replacement parking mostly on existing private property. But then has also taken recommendations to modify some of the the project elements that have drainage swale features and make them so that they're, you know, maybe impervious pavers or or something like that to increase the amount of parking, especially around the school, Jacobi Creek School. And so I do want to, you know, I don't have much data on that, but I wanted to let the planning commission know and the public know that we are taking into consideration the the public feedback that we're getting and trying to incorporate that in the design where we can. We're ensuring that the environmental document encompasses those modifications so that, you know, the changes would reflect a new impact on the environment. That would mean that we would have to, you know, modify the EIR potentially. And and so anything that would fall into that category, a project modification that would amend the environmental analysis will probably bring that to the city council and ask them if they want us to pursue that. But there are several project modifications that may be done. For example, for example, changing the width of the roads in the approaches to the to the roundabout that may be able to be accomplished with this existing environmental work. Commissioner Vice Chairman, are you had a question?
Yeah, um, it's on on that graphic, which, you know, I've seen it in black and white, but I admit I haven't seen it in color. At the blue lines, is that the public right of way line or what? What is what is that blue line?
Yeah, those These blue dotted lines, that's exactly right, Vice Chairman, are the bounds of the public right of way. And so it's private property on the outside. And then inside is all public right of way.
Okay, so so that Mistwood Parking Lot is actually on public right of way now?
Correct.
Okay. Thanks.
Sure. Commissioner Tegney?
Yes, the location of this emergency pump house, is that thing plumbed in to the ground? Or is it just a structure that holds some kind of a pump for emergency situations?
I am going to have to defray that question until nature is here. It's my understanding that it's plumbed in. Maybe Josh, do you know?
Yeah, I believe that's a sewer lift station. So I've certainly plumbed into the ground.
All right. The reason I ask is it feels as though if it wasn't there that this whole project could shift slightly to the, I guess that's kind of northwest. And, you know, not be quite so close to the Mistwood Educational Center. And I don't know the engineering, but it appears from my rough perspective that it could shift. But if that thing's in the way and it's plumbed in, that sounds like a great expense.
Yeah. So I did want to just share with the commission, the St. Louis West End Road Spear Road intersection, there's a similar situation where you have three roads, basically a three three-way intersection coming together with a roundabout in place. This is very similar to the kind of roundabout that would be going in if if approved at Bayside Corners with some of the same features, the, you know, islands with the refugia in in the center for pedestrians. This one doesn't have the the mountable sidewalks. In fact, in some some areas, the sidewalk disappears here. So we don't have sidewalk completely around it. But this is analogous in in several ways. For one, this is about the exact same size, it's slightly smaller, 110 feet across. Whereas the one on Bayside is proposed to be 113 feet across, so it's similar size. And we also have some historic resources. In fact, this home here is a historic landmark in the city. And so just showing that the, you know, with respect to the property lines, in most cases, the back of walk is on the property line. And the street is just outside back of walk. And so that's in some senses to give some perspective to, you know, the 43-foot separation between the roundabout and the building. The approximate, you know, 30-foot separation on the same cross section between the back of walk and the property line is much larger than you would anticipate to see in other settings, even other rural settings in the city of Arcata. And typically, the back of block is up against the property lines. Certainly, that's what the public right of way is intended to be. Ironically, the evaluation of a smaller roundabout because of the the orientation of the approaches would require that the roundabout encroach onto private property and in particular onto this Mistwood site. If we went with a smaller roundabout. So there may be a little bit of flexibility in here with the with the size and the approaches. But if we made this significantly smaller, it would actually, because of the the approaches from the roads that you're trying to connect to it, it would shift the entire structure towards Mistwood. And I don't know, I haven't evaluated, Josh, maybe you have some gestalt for whether or not if the, you know, pump house was was not there, if this could be shifted to the left, I don't know if that's true, if you feel comfortable, confident saying. But I just wanted you to have a sense for, you know, what what the orientation, the approximate size of this would be. And here's a rendering of the roundabout as proposed. When it's complete, you can see there there's still, you know, considerable public right of way that would be accessible for this Mistwood site. There'd be some parking leftover. And, you know, a much you know, reduced curvature for speed around these turns, which was one of the primary objectives of this project. You also get a sense for the sidewalks and how they integrate with the the bike lanes. So folks who feel confident, comfortable entering the roundabout on their bicycle can do so. And if they don't, they can jump onto this sidewalk. And so younger riders or more novice riders can still have a you know, safe way to cross, and then they can jump back into the bike lane on this side. Okay, so I'm going to transition here to historic resources and ask Mel, our consultant, to give you a little input on that because that is, again, one of the primary reasons for doing the EIR. Mel, can you unmute?
Make sure we're not having Okay, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Good evening, Commission. My name is Mel Melvin. I am a historian and architectural historian with JRP Historical Consulting. And I just want to provide you with kind of a brief overview of what JRP did for this project, and then I'll be happy to take questions. JRP was hired to assist the city in compliance with Section 106 of the National Historic Preservation Act and with Sequo as it pertains to historical resources. JRP's work entailed four primary tasks. One was assisting the city and Caltrans with establishing the APE or Area Potential Effects. The other was identification of historical resources in the APE. That is historical resources, meaning resources listed or eligible for listing in the National Register or California Register. And evaluate any properties in the AP that have not been previously listed or determined. The third task was assess the potential for a historic district anywhere along the project corridor. And the final task was to analyze the project impacts to any individual historic resources. So I'm just going to kind of summarize each one of those things quickly, starting with establishment of the APE. As I said, the the AP was established by Caltrans and the city of Arcata with assistance and input from JRP. The AP includes areas that may be directly or indirectly affected by the project along the project corridor. The area of direct effect is the area where actual project activities will occur. And all project activities throughout the corridor are within the existing public right of way. So no physical impacts on historical resources will occur as a result of this project. The only possible effects are was known as indirect effects, such as visual effects, the changes to the setting, changes to the surroundings. Parcels adjacent to the project corridor where the project does not pose a potential impact to built environment resources were not included in the AP. This determination was made based on project activities at different locations and the existing conditions along the project corridor. After evaluating these considerations, six parcels adjacent to the location of the proposed roundabout were brought into the AP because of potential visual impacts. But David, I don't know if you have the AP map handy or if you could pull that up, but that might that might help.
I'm Mel, I'm showing the AP map that we modified from the map that was submitted in the HRER because that map included some.
Sure, sure, sure. Yeah, okay, great. Along the remaining part of the project corridor, that is north of north of the roundabout, the AP follows or closely follows the right of way property property line and does not encompass any historic era built environment resources. The reason parcels near the roundabout were included in the AP and others were not was because of the difference in the nature of the project at the intersection of older Kater Road and Jacobi Creek Road. As David was discussing earlier with the construction of the roundabout and and the reconfiguration of that intersection. Project activities in the remainder of the project corridor include such things as restriping, resurfacing, construction of a new sidewalk, a bike lane. These things are minor, small scale and not notably dissimilar in use or appearance from existing conditions. Thus, there was no potential for visual effect in these areas, and those parcels were not brought into the AP. Once the AP is established, JRP prepared what's known as a historical resources evaluation report or HRE. The purpose of this report is to identify historic properties in the AP. And there's a lot, lot of different aspects to preparing an HRE. It involves extensive research and efforts to identifying identify known and potential historical resources, preparation of a historic context, property-specific historical research, and an intensive level field survey of the entire project corridor. This effort found that three of the six properties in the AP were less than 45 years old. And so they did not require any further evaluation or analysis under Section 106 or Sequo, just because they were they were too young. The other three properties were more than 45 years old. And they may be very familiar to many of you. One is the old Jacobi Creek School, which was listed in the National Register in 1985. Thus, it's automatically listed in the California Register. The two other properties required formal evaluation by JRP using the National Register and California Register criteria. One of these is the Temperance Hall, that Dave was just discussing, and the other was the Bayside Grange. And after conducting research and applying the criteria, JRP found that both of these buildings are eligible for the National Register and California Register. In addition to these three historical resources in the AP, there are four other properties with recognized historic status that are outside of the AP but are along the project corridor. These were identified in a 1978 study and determined eligible for the National Register. One of these is also on the city historic landmarks list. While not within the AP, these four are within the Bayside Specific Plan District as defined in the City of Arcata 2020 General Plan. In addition to these four properties, the 1978 study also documented several other buildings and structures along the project corridor, but outside of the AP. These properties, while documented in the 1978 study, did not receive SHPO concurrence as eligible for listing in the National Register. And none are listed as City of Arcata landmarks. Nonetheless, the recognition in the 1978 study gives them the potential to be local historically noteworthy properties. As part of the HRE, JRP also considered the possibility of a historic district along the the project corridor, both in and adjacent to the AP, including parcels outside of the AP. This entailed a pedestrian survey of the entire project corridor to make observations of the buildings and structures and of the overall setting of the area. Analysis also included consideration of the dates of construction of the buildings and structures and the the history of Bayside itself. In its analysis of a potential historic district, JRP used National Register and California Register guidelines as to what constitutes a historic district. JRP concluded there was there was no potential historic district because there was not a sufficient concentration or a discrete grouping of properties that are united historically, aesthetically, culturally, or architecturally. Any potential concentration of older buildings in this area is disrupted by buildings interspersed throughout the project corridor that have either lost historic integrity, that do not share a unifying historical, aesthetic, cultural, or aesthetic architectural characteristics, or that were constructed in recent decades. Moving on to impacts analysis. I think there's there's four things to remember when thinking about impacts to historical resources. And and one is that all project activities are within the existing public right of way. The the project won't encroach onto any private parcels whatsoever. The project won't entail removal of any feature of any historical resource or potential historical resource considered character defining or necessary for the resource to convey its historical significance. Thus, the only potential impacts to historical resources are related Thus, the only potential impacts to historical resources are related to visual and atmospheric changes. An impacts analysis is essentially an assessment of the effect of the project on the integrity of a historic resource. And there are seven aspects of integrity: materials, workmanship, design, location, feelings, association, and setting. And as I said, the, the project, the nature of the project, and the fact that it's entirely within the public right-of-way means that the only of those seven with the potential to be affected is that of setting. So the, with respect to the, the three properties near the roundabout, that is the old Jacoby Creek School, the, the Grange, and the Temperance Hall. And thinking about changes to the setting by this project, it's important to know that the Old Arcata Road-Jacobey Creek Road intersection was reconfigured in 1946 with Old Arcata Road turning into a modern sweeping curve through Bayside Corners. The project, therefore, is not proposing to replace the original historic intersection, but rather a modern intersection reflecting modern highway design and engineering that does not contribute to the significance of the properties. Other aspects of the setting have also changed in this area, including the loss of many late 19th and 20th, 20th century buildings and construction of many newer buildings than in the past 30 years. Even with construction of the proposed roundabout, Bayside Corners will still largely maintain its rural feeling and setting. In addition to the roundabout, the other project components near the roundabout, such as sidewalks, streetlights, crosswalks, are modest in scale and do not alter the setting of any of the historical resources to any significant degree. So while the project will result in some alterations to the setting, the diminishment of setting will not be substantial and will not diminish the overall integrity of the historical resources to such an extent that these properties can no longer convey their significance. A similar argument can be made for the properties north of the roundabout and outside of the AP. Project activities in these areas are also minor and small scale. They include things like restriping, resurfacing, new sidewalk, bike lanes, paving, driveway approaches. As no, as I noted earlier, all of these project activities are entirely within the existing roadway right-of-way and will not entail the removal or alteration of any landscape feature that, that is or could be considered a contributing feature to a historic, to the historic character of any historic property. Proposed project activities adjacent to these parcels are relatively minor, small scale, and not notably dissimilar in use or appearance from existing conditions. Thus, the project would not substantially alter the setting and result in a substantial adverse change. These properties along the project corridor outside the AP would retain their overall integrity and retain their ability to convey their historical significance or potential historical significance. And that's all I have prepared. As I said, I'm happy to answer any questions from the Commission.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Melvin before we open this to public comment? No one? I can't see if you have your hand raised, so.
I don't see any.
Okay. Okay.
I just have a couple of slides to finish up. Really, this last one. So I just wanted to, you know, reiterate where we're at in the environmental review. Right now, the CEQA document is the draft EIR that we're currently reviewing. It's completed circulation period. We're having this hearing tonight, and then we'll be having a hearing in November. It's anticipated at this point at the council in, and that will be a separately noticed hearing. And then we have the NEPA process that Caltrans is, is conducting, and they're right now going through their finalization of the Section 106 process, including, you know, consultations with the, with the public, there are people who are participating in that. And so we anticipate, you know, both those processes sometime in, in December, November, to be wrapped up and finalized in, in, you know, the current planning scenarios. Obviously, it's a public process, and we'll have to see how that, that rolls out. We'll be doing the final EIR, you know, conducting that work over the course of the next several weeks and have that ready before the council hearing in November. And that'll be available for public review as soon as it's completed. Again, we'll notify people when that, when that document is ready. So that's really all I have prepared. I do have some backup documentation, as I mentioned, or backup presentation, as I mentioned, if you're interested in, you know, getting into the nitty-gritty of, of project timing or, or financing, those are areas that I didn't cover tonight.
Anyone have any questions? Will we open?
Well, if we're going to come back and have an opportunity for questions later, that would be fine. I have a question of Josh, but I would be happy to discuss it now or later.
Okay, let's, let's go ahead and open this to public comment. Director Loya, do we have a lot of people who are interested in commenting?
There are about 21 attendees. I suspect everyone will have something to say. Right now, we have about seven hands raised.
So I'm thinking maybe three minutes. How does the Commission feel about giving everyone three minutes to comment? That sound good? Okay. All right, everybody's saying yes. Okay. So we're going to open the public comment and raise your hand, and you'll have three minutes.
Okay, thank you for that. And at our last hearing, we had a couple of folks who reported that they had trouble figuring out how to raise their hand. And so once we've gone through everyone, the raise hand feature, just for your identification, it should be one of the tabs on the bottom of your screen. If you're using the current update to Zoom. If you can't find that and you wish to speak, I'm going to go through each of the attendees and allow you an opportunity to speak. If, when I do that, you're not wishing to speak on the project, you could just say no, thank you, and we'll move on to the next. Otherwise, I'll be allowing you to speak for your three minute, minute period in the order that your hands were raised. Mark, you're the first one. Please go ahead and speak. And again, if you have audio coming through your computer, if you can turn that down, if you're speaking to us on your phone, that'll cut back on the reverb.
Okay, thank you, David. Does that, can you all hear me clearly?
You sound, you sound awesome. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So there was a lot of information there that I'd like to correct, but I'm not going to. I had sent in some written materials, but you can probably find those if you want them. The intersection is controversial and sensitive due to a known Wiat village. I'm surprised this report that, from the staff, is entirely about the roundabout. The actual project is a mile long from Buttermilk up to the very controversial roundabout. Everybody's in favor of the safety and the pedestrian way with some modifications, but no one is okay with the intersection being changed into a roundabout. The plan's not finished. It's at 30%. It's been there for four years. Alt 1 and Alt 2 were switched between 2016 and 2021. The community vertical Alt 1, which is a modification of the T intersection, which was second choice after no progress, no project. Technically correct, the intersection's in Arcata's sphere of influence. It's not in the city of Arcata's boundaries. It's actually in the coastal zone boundary and in Humboldt County. And I, as a citizen of Humboldt County, I'm not a citizen of Arcata. I don't get to vote. I haven't, all the people that are there don't get to vote. Only the people in Arcata get to vote. As a highway project in coastal zone outside of the cities, LAFCO must be applied to, under California state law, as you all seem to have picked up on the prior project. Caltrans is the lead agency due to federal fund amounts, and it's listed as such in your own documents and in your website. There's no such thing as two lead agencies. There are other agencies that are responsible agencies. So CEQA, NEPA, and the National Historic Preservation Act apply because of the funding, and in fact, contaminate the entirety of the project. The project must be consistent with California Constitution and with the general plans. It's nowhere near consistent with that. There's conflicts of interest that are obvious and known. Good Hair Day, SHN, Ocean Engineering, all the same firm. And I applaud the gentleman for stepping out. The 2021 project relies on 2016, 2017 SHN report. There are conflicting descriptions and outcomes. The necessary agents for NEPA, the National Historic Preservation Act, and CEQA were never contacted because Caltrans relinquished all responsibility to City of Arcata. Humboldt County planning has not led this project, which will result in transforming the old Arcata Road, a Humboldt County historic resource, protected underneath by the National Historic Preservation Act. The project is not on anyone's priority list. In fact, those people are not Miss Wood's parking. That's bicyclists parking to ride bicycles up Jacoby Creek Road. We don't use it, and, and stream guys, no one uses it except for the bicycle people. The project is de facto annexation, which is 100% LAFCO responsibility. The apparent ADA violations conflict with Humboldt County's federal and state ongoing ADA consent decree. Humboldt County would be burdened by all future cost lawsuits, ADA maintenance costs, as well in that other project. The residents of Bayside do not vote. The movement of the highway to within several feet of
Mark, I'm sorry, that was
That's, that's
It was three minutes.
It's a school. It's an active school. 85 feet closer. Thank
Okay, thank you. And Chip Sharp, you are next. Go ahead, please.
Okay, can you hear me?
We can. Welcome.
Yes, I was prepared to specifically address the issues for parking by Miss Wood. And I just want to say that I really appreciate David Loya's presentation. It made it clear that much of what I was going to ask for is already being considered. So what I'd like to add is that I think this should be a priority concern in terms of, of mending some of the rift within our community, because there are people who are feeling that Miss Wood and our Bayside Community Hall are being disrespected and, and disregarded. And I am fully in favor of the roundabout, the, the, I think the advantages for pedestrian and, and, and vehicle safety are quite obvious. So I, I don't feel like I need to speak to that. I've already submitted written comment about it. So I want to thank the city for being responsive to what people have asked for and being responsive to concerns. And if there's any way that I can help find a some compromises on the parking, some ideas that we haven't thought of yet, so that Miss Wood is not feeling desperate for how they're going to handle drop-off, pickup, and parking there. I volunteer for that. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Jim, you are in the meeting?
Great. Thanks, David. Can you hear me?
We can. Thank you.
Okay. So my name's Jim Zollick. I live at 1766 Old Arcata Road in Bayside. So I'm, I'm about, I'm on the, on the east side of the street, on the same side of the street as the post office, and I'm three doors north of the post office, three doors toward Arcata. And so I'm, I live very close to where the proposed roundabout would, would be, would go in. I have talked to over 20 households that are in the immediate vicinity of the roundabout, very close to me, and, and then headed down toward the school. And every one of these 20, 20-plus households, there's been tremendous support for the proposed project, including the roundabout and the sidewalks and the improvements, all the improvements to the roadway. Safety is a really serious issue on Old Arcata Road in Bayside. People come around that, that turn coming from the south at 45, 50, 55 miles an hour, and they don't, they don't need to slow down. It's, it's, you know, that, that, what used to be Bayside Corners is now a sweeping curve since 1940-ish, so that, so that you didn't have to slow down, and it worked very well. I think the proposed roundabout would take us back to a much more rural character in this, in this neighborhood, because it would slow the traffic down. And that's what's needed for bicyclists, for pedestrians. I, we walk our dog every day. I ride my bike in the area. There's, there's, those 20 households, many, many of them have children that, that walk to Jacoby Creek School or go to Mistwood. You know, the people are afraid to walk their kids to school because of the, the speed of, of vehicles going through this, this area. So the, the sidewalks are extremely important. All of, the whole project is extremely important, but I think the biggest thing I want to point out is in, in the environmental impact report document, the draft document that I've reviewed, I think everything, things are addressed very well. The historic issues are addressed very well. There is this alternative two that's, that is proposed as, as an alternative, as they, as it needs to be done. And like the, like the proposed project, it doesn't have any significant unmitigated impacts. Neither does the proposed project. The problem with alternative two, and what concerns me when I hear, you know, people that are, that are opposed to the roundabout, is that alternative two is not going to slow traffic down. The, the improvements to slow traffic that I saw for alternative two mostly have to do with exiting and entering from Jacoby Creek Road. That sweeping curve is, there, nothing is changing there. And so you're going to have crosswalks now at that intersection without slowing traffic, which is really like playing chicken with pedestrians. I think it's going to make it less safe, not more safe, if, if those changes are made in alternative two without, you know, instead of putting a roundabout. So I, you know, I think that's an important thing. I don't, I think without the roundabout, slowing the traffic through Bayside will not be accomplished, and, and the objectives of this project.
I'm sorry, that was three minutes. Thank you for your comments.
Thanks, thanks for
Jim Moore, you are up.
Hello?
Yeah, welcome.
Okay. I'd like to thank the city and yeah, getting
Yeah, do you have two speakers, like maybe a speaker on a computer going as well as your phone? That's where I think the reverb may be coming from. Try this one more time.
Okay.
Much better.
How are we now?
Sounded good. Thank you.
Okay, sorry about that. I, I want to thank the city and all of the people who've worked on this, including the highly engaged neighbors that are, they're all involved. I'm frankly puzzled. There's, there's two alternatives. One of them has no impact on, or minimal impact on Mistwood has, keeps the character of the intersection pretty much the same. Now, now Jim just raised some interesting points about the, the speed coming through on northbound. And if you add some rumble strips to the improved improved T version, then rumble strips just south of the intersection would alert people that they were speeding. People who don't want to pay attention to the speed limit, in other words, deliberate speeders, they, a roundabout, they slow to 25 miles an hour and then speed right up. And that's demonstrated by the number of southbound motorists between the Sunnybury Roundabout and the intersection in question. There, there are people who come through going that way after having been through a roundabout at 40-plus miles an hour. So doing something to stop speeding was, was great. There are better and cheaper ways of doing it that don't impact on an existing school. That's all. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jim. Okay, thank you, Jim. Okay, and I believe Jonathan?
Hi, it's actually Alice Finan, um, it's not my husband.
You tricked me.
Hi, it's, it's really me, um, so thank you so much for allowing me this opportunity to speak. Um, I am one of the two co-directors at Mistwood Educational Center, which is the historic Temperance Hall that we have been speaking so much about. Um, and I would like to let everybody know that Chip Sharp and Jim Zollick do not represent Mistwood at all. Um, I've never spoken with either of them. Every single student and family at Mistwood is adamantly proposed to the roundabout. Um, when I first showed the roundabout image to the kids, they thought that it looked really nice. And then when I actually took the kids outside to where the roundabout will be, they were horrified. They all said that the roundabout is too close. So what I'm doing tonight is um, I'm really asking the council to support the alternative plan to narrow the roadway and keep the same configuration of the road. Um, we need a plan that's going to show that we're listening to the voices of the youth. That shows that concerns about safety are being met. And we need a design that supports and encourages the community space that what um, is called the, the private parking lot is, it's not a private parking lot. It's actually used by the public, by bicycle enthusiasts, they use it for a meeting space constantly. And the sheriff actually uses that space to meet when um, when they have a safety concern in the neighborhood. The community hall uses that space, the Unitarian Church uses that space. Um, and it's also really a safe space for us at the school as a drop off and a buffer for, for traffic. Our playground is right next to that, and you know, the children really are at the school to learn, their job is to learn and to play. And I'm asking you, how can they do their job when they're constantly afraid of the pathway that the roundabout creates for traffic to come into their playground or into their school where their teachers are trying to teach them? They're also concerned about the safety for the public, if somebody is not paying attention on their phone and a ball comes out into traffic, they're really concerned that a car could drive into our school. Um, I would ask everybody to come who supports the roundabout to see where the roundabout would actually be and how close it actually is to our school. So Mel Melvin said that the change is relatively minor, it might be relatively minor to somebody passing through, but not to our school, it would be an immense change to the students and our community, thank you so much.
Thank you, Alice. Uh, Carla, you're in the meeting?
Okay, hello, thank you so much, um, I live on Old Arcata Road and my kids go to Jacoby Creek and they, um, their grandparents live on Jacoby Creek Road, so we walk frequently from Old Arcata Road to that area, and I am in full support of the plan as is, and it is just amazing that all this energy has gone into making it safer um, for pedestrians and for bicyclists. And just today I was coming through where the roundabout would be and a motorcycle passed me in that area right there, and that wouldn't have been possible if there was a roundabout, because you have to slow down um, for the roundabout. And that second option doesn't really seem to address the issues of the safety, and I would say it sounded like from the uh, ERI or the historical report that um, it's, there are no impacts to the, to the historic nature of the area. Um, uh, except for maybe a little bit of visual um, impact. And I think our children's safety is way more important than that, our adult safety, um, I would much rather see that. Um, thank you, I've been going to meetings since I think before two thousand sixteen, sixteen about this, um. And I just really appreciate all the energy. Uh, and I'm looking forward, I hope you guys, I wish you guys could start sooner. Uh, and I think that's pretty much all I have to say, thank you um, so much. I just really think that second option, treating it as a T is not safe, um, thank you.
Right, thank you. Uh, Gordon, you're in the meeting, go ahead.
Can you hear me, David?
Yep, we can, thank you.
Okay, good, um, so I don't really need three minutes, but, but um, you know, Jacoby Creek Road had, we've been here thirty years. For almost the whole thirty years, uh, we've seen this project underway and constantly thwarted, constantly thwarted, stopping and starting. Um, I want to point out that uh, to, to the previous speaker who talked about the safety risks, that in the past month, just in the past month, we've had two near fatal accidents on Old Arcata Road between Highland Street where I live and the post office. Um, one of them was a cyclist trying to get around garbage pails and who fell off his bike and ended up in the emergency room with multiple injuries. And uh, so you know, this thing is really dangerous, it's been getting worse for thirty years. It's now, I walk or ride my bike every day if it's, if, if it's not raining, if it's and and I go back and forth on Old Arcata Road, I'm, I'm a serious cyclist. And it's in terrible condition, and you've got hundreds of kids coming out of Jacoby Creek School who are walking in traffic. So let's fix this thing, let's make it, let's make it a safe road and a beautiful road. I love the design, it's widely admired in Bayside, but they, as you know from the charrettes that we had, let's build it, thank you.
Right, thank you. Uh, Grayson, you are in the meeting?
Uh, hello, I am Grayson Finan, I go to Mistwood Educational Center. And I just wanted to say that um, I, I think it is too close to the school and all of my classmates think that too. Um, when we went out and actually looked at it, it was, we thought it was way too close. And like if a logging truck came through and lost control, like I don't even want to think about what could happen. Um. But yeah, I don't really have much to say, um, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Grayson. I appreciate your uh, public service participating in this process as well. Uh, call in user one. Kathleen?
Good evening, this is Kathleen Stanton.
Welcome.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to make a point that um, before I, I, I began, that I, I peeked inside the pump house recently. And it looks like it's just a giant generator, a portable generator that's in there. So I think it would be great if the city could look into whether or not really there is any plumbing associated with that building, or if it's just there for storage. Um, I'm with Bayside Cares and I hope you've got my photos in your packet showing just how close the road will be to the eighteen eighty-two Temperance Hall, which is now the Mistwood Elementary School. Having Old Arcata Road thirty-five feet from the school is an unacceptable distance for the children who are sensitive receptors. And it's also an adverse impact to the integrity of a national register eligible landmark. During the draft DIR comment period, which just ended September twenty-seventh, the distance was forty-five feet between the road and the school, as reported by the city. And now it's ten feet closer, according to a new plan that Netra provided the public. And I included that also as one of the graphics in my um, email. Um, I think the city's alternative plan is a better vision for historic Bayside Corners. It's going to keep the current configuration of the road, it's not about having a T intersection. But it narrows the lanes and it adds medians to slow traffic. And I wanted to let everyone know that Bayside Cares is working very successfully with the county on the straightaway that's south of the intersection of Old Arcata Road and Jacoby Creek Road. And that's where the speeding really happens. And the good news is that the county is going to reduce the speed from forty-five miles an hour to thirty-five miles per hour, and that's just the beginning. And we hope to get speed humps and LED speed signs and narrow the lanes that the city intends to do on their portion of the project. So we really are addressing the speed factor as cars come to the intersection of Old Arcata Road and Jacoby Creek Road. We don't have a traffic issue at Bayside Corners, only a speeding issue, which we're addressing in consultation with the county. The roundabout plan brings up busy Old Arcata Road, seventy-six feet closer to the school. So it's within thirty-five feet of the front door, which is way too close to a school. There are also many other issues that haven't been adequately addressed in the thirty percent design, which includes drainage, which is currently a big problem for the school, and the protection of the historic hall. The loss of twenty-plus parking spaces in the open space that exists now between the building and the road, which is a buffer for the school, is going to be gone. That's where the roundabout will be. And we have a bright orange line based on Netra's map that show you the distance right there, the roadway, thirty-five feet from the front door. So I support the alternative plan and I hope the council will too, and I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Kathleen. Patrick, you are in the meeting?
Hey, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can, welcome.
Great, uh, yeah, so I'd like to uh, again, thank the city for their hard work, um, it looks uh, great so far. Um, at least the new roundabout designs, I'm in support of the roundabout. Um, I think that will slow people down, and I do not think that it will affect the historic uh, quality of Bayside at all, and it will improve the safety. Um, actually will improve uh, the historic quality, because when you approach from the south, from Bayside cutoff, you're actually going to slow down and see this beautiful structure, roundabout, um, whatever design it takes, uh, I mean, in the center that is. That will create a uh, a, a welcome to Bayside. And people that are in support of, of no roundabout are actually advocating for a kind of a faster, speedier, if you go forward ten years with cars zipping along, I don't think that's welcome to Bayside at all. There's a chain link fence there and um, anyway, so I'm in support of the roundabout, good work, guys, keep it up. I was um, also going to suggest that uh, regardless of where we're talking about slowing people down, rumble strips don't work, speed bumps don't work. I live uh, right in front of the speed bump, and I can tell you that those, those actually cause people to go faster. Trailers go over speed bumps uh, at a slow speed, but if they have an empty trailer, it is very noisy, probably beyond the uh, the legal uh, you know, sound. So speed bumps don't really work, rumble strips don't work, I think sidewalks and um, bike lanes do. And um, I, 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 just a quick comment about somebody saying about LED speed signs. The same commenter mentioned something on how important it was to have historic qualities. Well, I don't think LED speed signs are really very historic at all, so those don't really work either. But anyway, thanks, guys, keep up, good work.
Okay, thank you, Patrick. Um, so Chair, we do have a handful of people, maybe three or four, who are in the meeting, did not raise their hand. Um, and then we have a couple of people who have raised their hand again, um, do have one new speaker, so let me allow that person in. Hi Jude, welcome, welcome to the meeting.
Oh, hi Dave, thank you. Um, yeah, I just want to say that um, I want to reiterate something somebody else mentioned, this project actually started in twenty twenty and um, was interrupted at that point and then resumed in twenty sixteen. It's been a very long process, I've lived in Bayside the entire time, I've lived here twenty-eight years. And um, then incorporated Bayside, and I just want to say that um, it's a huge safety issue at that intersection, it is a T intersection. And the Caltrans projection is that if left as a T intersection, in other words, without the roundabout, people are not going to be able to turn left off of older, off of Jacoby Creek Road onto Old Arcata Road at some point, because the traffic will be increasing, and no one has mentioned yet that the student body at Humboldt State is going to double in seven years. And all the commensurate extra faculty and staff, construction people, et cetera, are going to be impacting this, the area surrounding Arcata. Since I've lived here, there is far more traffic along Old Arcata Road than there ever used to be. I'm passed by cars in front of the school, believe it or not, more than I ever have been before. So the traffic is not only getting heavier, it's getting more impatient. Um, and it, we're going to be having more and more, much more traffic than when the original assessments and predictions were done for this intersection, which were dire enough. That was before HSE was proposed to become a polytechnic. And before climate and fire refugees started buying homes above asking price all over the place here. So it's a huge safety issue there, and it's not just about cars, it's about pedestrians and cyclists. It's a terrifying intersection to cross as a pedestrian or a cyclist right now. And the sidewalks and the, and the uh, formalized crossings and the slower cars will make it way more safe for pedestrians and cyclists, young and old there. So I completely support the roundabout. Twice as many people supported the roundabout in nine, in twenty seventeen, and it has continued that more people support the roundabout than not. So I, it's just a beautiful job, the engineering department has done an absolutely beautiful job, they have responded to all the concerns. There is actually more parking along old uh, Jacoby Creek Road than there is right now, even if they take out the parking on the county right of way by the school. They have added more parking places than they will be taking out. So that's not even an issue, it's a beautiful job, I support it, build it, thank you.
Thank you, Jude. Um, we do have uh, one speaker, who I know there are multiple people um, on that line, so if you don't mind, Chair, I will see if there's someone else who wants to speak. And then again, there are a couple of people who haven't raised their hand, would you like me to invite them to, to speak and see if they're interested in doing so, but just haven't been able to figure out the technology? Okay. Um, Al, is this Alice?
No, this is Jonathan again, sorry.
Okay, I suspected that might be the case, go, go ahead, Jonathan.
Yeah, a couple of questions, uh, first off, there's talk about sidewalks with the roundabout, and I'm just curious what they're connecting to. Because to the best of my knowledge, there's no sidewalks within two hundred yards of the proposed roundabout site in any direction. So why are we building sidewalks to nowhere, where the sidewalk ends, I, I don't know. Um, just seems kind of silly to me. And for the green city of Arcata, adding more asphalt and concrete to the world doesn't seem like the most environmentally respectful thing to do. And additionally, the environmental impact of all of the streetlights and flashing lights that are being proposed, have those been run that are being proposed, have those been run by the people who actually live there and are going to have to deal with those on a day-in, day-out basis? Because it doesn't seem like that's a very respectful thing to do to your neighbors and neighborhood either. Um, and then the last thing I would say, kind of in concert with what I spoke to before with the Carlson Park area is this is going to further delay response of emergency vehicles into an area that already has an extended response time from fire, from law enforcement, from EMS. And every additional, as the city puts it, traffic calming measure, which are not very calming, tend to extend the response time by, by not less than fifteen seconds per obstacle. And between the downtown area of Arcata and the Bayside Corners areas, we're calling it, that's four speed humps, two or three roundabouts, plus this proposed third is almost two minutes of additional response time. And for somebody who's doing CPR on somebody, that's a long time to add to somebody's possible life-saving measures, as well as the fact that a fire given adequate fuels, which every home in America has, doubles in size every nine to twelve seconds. That's a huge addition to response time for something of that nature in an exceedingly res- distended area for response anyway. I don't see how the roundabout makes any kind of sense in any way, shape, size, or form. That's my two cents, and I'd like to defer the rest of my time to mark the lane.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I am going to do my best to, okay, we have one more who hadn't raised their hand before. Uh, go ahead, caller. Christie or Bert, Colbert?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah, welcome.
Hi, thank you, David. So, um, we live at seventeen fifty-nine Old Arcata Road, and we've been here for thirty-four years, and I want to thank the city and everybody who's worked so hard on this project. We have seen the traffic, speed, and danger increase. We walked our, uh, boys to Jacoby Creek School, and I ride my bike, and I want to reiterate a lot of things that I have heard tonight. We are in full support of the roundabout and want to just state that, you know, um, the Institute for Highway Safety shows that roundabouts reduce injury crashes by seventy-five percent. When we first moved here and our kids were babies, we responded to accidents on this curve. I don't remember how many, but there were quite a few. So I'm in full, we are in full support. Um, and again, I want to thank everybody for all their hard work, and I just want it to be safer. The other thing is, in all of these kinds of projects, there are going to be sacrifices. There are going to be things that we might, might not like every little thing that's going to happen in front of our property. But those of us who live within two hundred feet of this curve, this project, see people pass almost on a daily basis coming southbound from Arcata, northbound from, um, Eureka. Uh, our neighbor, right next to us, had a house fire this last year. And I have to tell you, fire and ambulance, they respond, coming down one-on-one, and they come out, um, on the cutoff, and they were here. And that's how they come now. They are here so fast. So thanks again. I won't go on and on. We are in full support.
Okay, thank you. Okay, with that, there are only a couple of people who have not raised their hand. And again, I'm going to allow you into the meeting to talk. You can, if you don't wish to speak, and you just say no, thank you. Okay, Cheryl, it's telling me that if you are, if you come in, you'll come in as a panelist. And then if I remove you as panelist, you'll, I believe, um, be kicked out of the meeting. So please fi- uh, find the raise hand function. I don't want to kick you out of the meeting if I can avoid it. I'll go on to the next few people while you work through that. Uh, Jeremy?
Yeah, good evening. Thanks, David. Um, I will take a few minutes if everybody can hear me.
Yeah, we can hear you fine. Welcome.
Yeah, great. Thank you. So, uh, good evening, commissioners and staff. My name's Jeremy Savella. Um, uh, my family and I live at eighteen fifteen, uh, Old Arcata Road, uh, just across Old Arcata Road from the post office, and we've lived there for just over four years. Um, also, just for the record and full disclosure, I, I work for GHD, the consultant that prepared the environmental impact report for the city. However, I've not been involved with the development of that document. Um, but I am speaking as a resident on Old Arcata Road, and I feel it is incumbent upon me, um, based on what I've observed over the four years of living on Old Arcata Road and the dangers and the safety concerns there at the intersection with Jacoby Creek Road uh, that really need to be brought forward. And, and we've heard that repetitively tonight in, in testimony of, of the safety concerns. Um, and just want to reiterate that, uh, two doors down, our neighbors, Bob and Ginny Ellis, had two accidents, uh, hit and runs, uh, in the middle of the night, back-to-back that occurred last spring, um, within a week of each other, destroyed their fence. Um, there's been multiple accidents like that that have gone unreported, um, that could have just as easily happened at, at the Montessori at the, at Miss Wood School. Um, and so I think we, um, have heard tonight of the safety concerns. We are in full support of the project and the roundabout to address those concerns. It really is the only alternative that's going to slow down traffic where it needs to be slowed down and control it. Signage enforcement, those are great measures, but they're not going to provide a permanent fix that's really going to solve the problem. Um, I walk my se- second grader and seventh grader to school almost daily. Uh, we see firsthand the concerns, um, of, of the speeding and, uh, the issues along the road, um, and really feel that this is a great opportunity for the city, um, to bring forward a project, uh, for public safety purposes at the forefront and really appreciate the city and all of the hard work that's gone into this and really trying to make it a very transparent, um, and responsive process to, to this, to the needs of the community. So thank you.
Right, thank you, Jeremy. Let's see. Uh, Chris, did you have comments you'd like to make? Okay, I'm going to take that as a no. Uh, let's see. Julia, did you have comments you'd like to make but just couldn't find the, uh, correct buttons to speak?
No comment. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And... Uh, Lee, did you have comments on this item that you were not able to find the, the option to speak on?
Yes.
We can, Lee.
Okay, so, yeah, my wife and I bike, uh, quite often on this stretch. Um, and we're, we're really in favor, especially of the roundabout. I mean, it's just going to slow traffic down. It's, it's proven in studies. And so, uh, I think the project should go as it is, and we're highly in favor. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Uh, let's see. Uh, Bob, did you have comments you wanted to make? Or Susan? Okay. You're going to take that as a no? I believe we've gone through, uh, everyone who's, uh, wished to speak on a, uh, subject once. Um, we do have a couple of people who've raised their hand for a second, bite at the apple. I'll leave that to the chair and the commission, uh, as to, oh, I'm sorry. They found, they found the raise hand function. Okay, perfect. Um, Bob or Susan, you're in the meeting, or both?
Hi, can you hear me? This is Susan McPherson.
Yeah, hi Susan, welcome.
Hi. I've lived on Old Arcata Road for almost fifty years, and yes, I've seen lots of traffic and an increase of that. If there were a roundabout at Old Arcata Road and Jacoby Creek Road, yes, people would slow down there, but you know what? Afterwards, there are straightaways. There's a straightaway going south to Bayside Cut Off. There's a straightaway going north towards Jacoby Creek School, and there's even a straightaway going east up Jacoby Creek Road. And what happens when people slow, they slow down in the roundabout, but then after they're out of it, they take off again. So yes, roundabout, slow down people, they regulate traffic right there, but when you get out of the roundabout, people take off. I'd like people to consider that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. Okay, so again, I'll, uh, turn it back to the commission. Um, if you would like to hear another round, that may mean going through everyone a second time, uh, it's up to, up to you to allow for a second, second, second opportunity for public comment.
My opinion is that, um, everyone's been given, given a lot of opportunity to address this over and over again the past couple of years. Um, but it's up to the commission, if you're, do you want to give people a second? Um, turn at the mic? No? I think no. No. Okay, so, um, we're going to close the public portion, um, public comment portion of this hearing, and then do the commissioners have any comments regarding this? Um, we need to, uh, what do we want to recommend to the city council, if anything? We have basically three options, uh, the roundabout, the T intersection, or no solution. Do we want to send a recommendation to the city council? So should we just start with the top, stop, Commissioner White, do you have a, anything you'd like?
Are we, we're not voting to say we're just making a recommendation or, um? I would like to see a roundabout.
Uh, Commissioner Mayor?
Um, I, I think there are a number of, of aspects here that, uh, we might make recommendations on separately rather than, you know, uh, go for the whole, um, DEIR or, or not. Um, and I think that that, that would be a more useful approach than, than just saying yea, yea, yere, nay to the entire document. Um, I've, I've heard enough about, um, just in the, in the comments and in the document itself, um, to have some feelings that on the historic, um, and cultural parts, um, that there, there doesn't seem to be, um, agreement among, uh, people that I would consider experts, especially when many of those opinions are so far apart, despite the fact that the city has hired an expert to e- explain how, uh, then the no historic resource impact seems to fit, um, kind of the letter of the standards. Um, I, I think the city is probab- the city council's probably going to go through this entire process again. Um, and they're going to be looking at various parts of the project as well. So, um, I'm not sure I see any real benefit in the commission as a whole making a single recommendation, um, on the entire document to the council, um, at, at this time. We're not, um, required to do so. Um, I, I would like to, to just put, put something forward about the document as a whole as we saw it and some material that, um, you know, the members of the public haven't really commented on. Um, in, in the document that I saw, there was so much material redacted, um, from the public comments that in some cases, the material was redacted to the point where the comment made no sense, and I wasn't able to judge it, especially when entire graphics that apparently were submitted by members of the public had been redacted from the version that, that was in our packet. Um, I, I think that when a member of the public submits a comment, um, in response to a request for comments on a public document, they know and expect that that material will, um, get to the commissioners who are being asked to review the material that they've taken the trouble to submit. Um, so whatever city, um, standards have gone into those redactions, I, I would seriously, um, like to reconsider, um, if a member of the public submits something, um, for the commission to review, I want to see what they submit.
Do you mind if I address that, uh, Vice Chairman Mayor?
Um, I, I'd love, I'd love, I'd love you to address it, and I, I do understand why you might want to get rid of someone's address or a phone number or something like that. Um, but beyond that, I see no justification in redacting anything that I, as a commissioner, want to review, something that they submitted.
Yeah, that's...
To me, in effect.
Yeah, and I appreciate you bringing that up to the floor. We didn't address that in the, uh, in the staff report, and so, um, I appreciate that you, uh, did bring that up. The, uh, reason why those, uh, pages were redacted is because they actually included confidential, uh, cultural resources information. Uh, just a little bit of brief background on, uh, the way, uh, that information was, uh, released to the public. Is it inadvertent release of that, that, uh, resource material? And the city, as a result, uh, went ahead and redacted the information in the E I R, in one of the, the reports that was in the E I R. Um, despite our best efforts to try and, you know, pull back that, um, that sensitive information, uh, it did get released into the public. Uh, the city attorney is currently working on a request that I made to her to, you know, to evaluate the, the relevant bodies of law that are, uh, that, you know, are implicated uh, by this. Um, but in effect, the, uh, the city can't in good conscience, uh, put into the public record confidential information. If the city receives, you know, a list of, uh, you know, personally identifying information or, you know, materials that are otherwise protected from, uh, disclosure laws, just because they submitted it, um, doesn't mean that we have an obligation to then put that into the rec- record and publish it. And so I assure you that all of the content that was not, uh, deemed sensitive, culturally sensitive information was, uh, left in to the record, and all of the content that was deemed sensitive, uh, was redacted and removed from the record. Um, and so, uh, you know, it's, it's, it's a delicate balance to walk. I did get, uh, another email today from a public member who, uh, submitted some confidential information, uh, that was forwarded to you in an email, uh, prior to the meeting, uh, which also had some, some sensitive information, and that was redacted from that email as well. Um, and so that, that is, you know, clearly a policy of the city that it will not release, uh, you know, information that's deemed to be confidential just because it was submitted by a public member. And so I apologize for not explaining that in advance.
I, I, I understand that for, for, for some of the material, but the, I think that the, the types of redaction that I'm also referring to, um, that didn't include information like that. It, it just went way beyond that. Um, so, um, but anyway, I, 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 I think that it's great that the commission is providing a forum for review and discussion and public comments. Um, but I don't see a need for the commission to make a, a single unified, um, recommendation to the city council at this time.
Okay, thank you. Um, Commissioner Barstow, do you have a comment?
Yeah, um, I agree with Judith that, uh, there would be no point in us, uh, making a recommendation at this point. Uh, the information is all there, and the council's going to have to go through it all themselves and make the final evaluation. So, uh, you know, we, we should probably have a fourth option, and that is no comment.
Yeah, um, I'm so in favor of this project as presented, and so surprised that, that, the pushback on the roundabout. Um, I've enjoyed Arcata's roundabouts as a neighbor of them and as a user of them, as they've uh, appeared in differing spots around the city for years now, and um, th- this one just seems like yet another solution to a really difficult problem. And the only way that I've seen effectively to slow people down is with the roundabout. I think they work fabulously. So, um, I'm disappointed that the commission doesn't have an opportunity to send support if we are uni- unified in support of this project. If there was any nudge that it gave to the city council at all, that we've heard a lot of testimony, that we've read a lot of letters and, um, read what we have of the staff report. If we're in favor, I would love to nudge this project in any way we can. Um, so personally, I'm in favor of forwarding our support if that's the way we feel. Uh, they can ignore it or not, but if it helps nudge this project forward, I think it's a great project in from one end to the other.
Thank you. Um, I'm also in favor of the roundabout. I feel strongly that this will help, um, with public safety, not just vehicles, but especially for those who use alternative modes and and as far as the, and I do sympathize with the, the school, but as, as far as the you know, the street that, being close to the school, Jacoby Creek, you know, has the street right out in front. Though the new, um, school on K Street has a street right in front. Um, and frankly, I'd, I think I'd rather have slow-moving, uh, vehicle closer to the school rather than the fast-moving vehicles just a little bit further away. Um, so I'm in favor of the roundabout, and I wish we could send a recommendation that we support the new, the roundabout, but I don't think that's gonna, I think there's three of us versus two, so at, where do we go from here, David?
Well, I, I do want to be clear that, you know, to, uh, Vice Chair Mayor's point, um, it's, would be inappropriate to make a recommendation on the EIR. Um, if you wish to make a recommendation, um, on any aspect of the project, you know, the roundabout or, or others, um, you can certainly do that, um, at this point, because it's not, um, you know, codified in terms of a, um, you know, ordinance which would require a majority, uh, you know, basically a quorum of the body, um, you know, this would just be a simple majority of the, the members present, uh, to make a recommendation, uh, of this type. So it's, it's really up to you. If you, you know, wish to hold tight, not make a recommend- recommendation, that's fine. Um, you know, if you wish to pass a motion to recommend the roundabout or any other element, that's also fine.
Well, do we have a motion? Does someone want to make a motion? That, that will, that's how we're gonna decide.
Uh, I make a motion that we, um, show support of this project as presented, including the roundabout.
We have a motion by Commissioner, uh, Tangley. Do we have a second?
I have a second.
We have a second by, um, Commissioner White. Do you want to do a roll call, David, and see what happens?
Sure, um, Commissioner Tagney?
Aye.
Commissioner White?
Aye.
Commissioner Mayor?
I'm gonna abstain.
Okay, Commissioner Barstow?
Aye.
And Commissioner Visage Alcock?
Aye. Okay, motion passes to send a, our recommendation for the roundabout. Do you need anything else from us regarding this item? No? Okay, motion approved. So, do we have any business items?
We have no business items.
Do we have any correspondence or communications?
I do have a couple of pieces. Uh, do any planning commissioners have any correspondence?
We've questioned that in our email from you, there was a mention of, uh, you suggesting we email below if we wanted, uh, hard copy. Um, is that now gonna be the regular routine, or some people only receiving these digitally and others hard copy, or how are we doing this?
Yeah, um, that's a, that's a really good question. So a couple of things happened on this last packet. Um, one is that, uh, I think some of you may have, um, not received the email that we sent out on Friday notifying you that the packet was available. Um, I heard that from at least one commissioner, and it was a result of, uh, an option that selects for sending out a, an attachment of the, um, uh, staff report, and the staff report was quite large. And so apologize if you didn't receive that email. Um, it is always on Friday. It'll always be up on our website. So if you go to the, the website, you can pull that down with a link. Our practice going forward to ensure that this doesn't happen again will be that we will send you a notification, the packet's ready, and we will send you the link, and so that you can download it. Um, because we're operating electronically, we have kind of moved more in that direction, but certainly if you have, uh, if you want a physical packet, I, I have my packet printed, so, you know, no judgment here. I, I keep a physical copy with physical notes on them. If you want to do the same, just let us know, and we'll print that for you. Um, and, and really, you don't have to let us know every time. If you just, if you want to be on the list of packets that are printed, um, let us know, and we'll make sure that there's always gonna be one there for you.
I would like mine printed. Thanks.
Okay, I'll take note of that. Anybody else want to vote in favor of a printed packet here?
Yes.
Okay, Kimberly? Okay. Now, we will take note of that. I, I got it, I got you, uh, Commissioner Mayor and Barstow, Vice, Vice Chair Mayor and Barstow. Um, okay, and then the only, um, I had two items that I wanted to share. One is that, um, we are, uh, one is that, uh, just for the record, Davies was absent. I think I failed to mention that in our roll call. And, um, I'll, I'll be chewed out by our tech guy if I, if I don't mention that. So, there you go, Dylan. Um, I also wanted to mention, um, more excitingly, uh, that we're, we're doing a couple more walking tours of the Gateway Area. For all those out in, uh, TV land, or, you know, if, if the planning commission didn't get enough the first time, you want to go again. Um, we're doing one tomorrow, uh, the, I'm sorry, Friday, the fifteenth, starting at five o'clock. And, uh, Senior Planner Freitas is going to lead that one, so you'll be, um, regaled by her, uh, deep wisdom on Friday night. And then on Saturday morning, I will be, uh, leading one Saturday, October sixteenth at ten forty-five. Both those will be starting from City Hall, uh, front lawn, and we'll, uh, leave from there. It's about a mile walk. Um, it's a lot of fun. It's probably the most fun I've had all year, to be frank. Um, so please come join us if you want to hear about what we're doing in the Arcata Gateway Area Plan, uh, with, uh, high, high, you know, high-density, compact, uh, eco-friendly, uh, development that we're working on out there. And I believe those are all my, um, all my comments to you.
All right. Any commissioners have a last comment? All right, this meeting is adjourned. Have a nice evening, everyone.